Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I am good today, and Commissioner Beasley already told me he's in a good mood, so I'm very good today.
It just doesn't get any better than that, does it?
Yeah, okay. I appreciate your having me here this morning to discuss a couple of budget requests that I had that were different than last year. First off, we'll ask about the, a couple of months ago, you approved a budget amendment for my office allowing some more training dollars for new clerks. Because of the time of year that we got the budget bumped up, we were not able to get them in an educational school. They are both on standby, they're both registered, but waiting for a date to come open. So I'm asking that you allow me to keep that money for their two education courses into the new budget. And I know you don't allow carryovers, per se. Hopefully, we'll get in before the year's out, but if not, I'd like to know that I had the money to go ahead and pay for that. I do have two fairly new clerks. One has been there a month, the other has been there a little over a year. I think most of you are aware, Jennifer was a very long-term clerk, and she left my office this past year. We spent over a month going through what we had on file, trying to figure out where we were. So we saved that month worth of salary, plus we lost her lit longevity pay, and that's the money that you actually moved or approved the moving for these educational requirements. That was number one. Do I need to ask for questions for that, or are we ready to move on?
Please, keep going.
Okay. The other request that I have is for a part-time temporary office position to help us scan old files. As a new judge, I had no idea what I was required to keep or not keep in storage for how long. So we have been researching this as we are beginning to get calls for judgments on cases that are five, six, seven, eight years old. We were having to go out to our storage building and pull these cases. Unfortunately, our storage buildings do not meet the requirements set forth by the law for keeping permanent records. Some of these pictures, this one probably, these are what some of our files were like around that storage building. These are files that we're supposed to keep indefinitely.
Is that the file cabinet you have them in?
That's the file cabinet we have them in, council. We don't have file cabinets out there.
Is that storage area in the back of the building?
Yes, it is attached to the building.
It's a separate building?
It's attached to it.
It's attached to it, but it's back.
One of them is to the side, and one of them is behind.
Wow, one behind and to the side, which is, I thought it was completely separate, the one on the side.
No, it's attached to the building. It's attached to the building.
They're attached, and some of this is the roof issue that we're having over there, correct?
Well, the roof issue that you're addressing is on the court. It's not on the storage.
So the storage is not leaking?
The storage is leaking.
And that's the part that we have in the work, that we have the bid out on now to redo the roofing of that area?
My understanding is that you did not include those buildings. Now, if you did, that's great.
Because, that's my understanding, because they're all attached to the building. Because it's all, it's metal roofing, and well, it was rolled over, portion of, portion of it was rolled over metal, and the other part is metal top.
Correct.
Right, okay.
This, these buildings have holes where you can see sunlight through, on sides, not just roof. You're supposed to have a climate-controlled storage for these. We've got cases, if you had a judgment that was a monetary judgment, and somebody has 10 years to file that judgment, they can come in on year nine and file it. I was supposed to have kept those for 12 years anyway. When they come in and file, that 12 years just got extended. Every time something happens on that case, that filing requirement gets extended. These were things I had no idea until it came up, and then, you know, that's the way you learn these things anyway, when something happens and you have to go find something that's... These files, you can see, they're disintegrating to the point of not being usable. What we're wanting to do is go out there and scan them, get them in the computer, save what we can from this date forward. Everything that's happening in my court now is being scanned as it is being done. So, and we're going back. If we're pulling something new now, something old out of these storage buildings, we're scanning. We're trying to salvage what we can. But because this is an ongoing deterioration, some of these things are wet. When the county came in and did some shredding, the shredding companies would not accept this because some of it's molded, some of it's damp, and they just said, "We won't shred that." So we're gonna have to find a way to burn it.
Is that shredding company the one that we used through all that office setup?
Yes. I mean, they came out and looked at it. They were very helpful as far as we can scan that, or we can shred that, we cannot shred that, that was Jeremiah's response. So we're in that, in that fix of having to do something to take care of this now. I would also request, because I don't think you're gonna be able to bring those storage buildings up to the requirements, that some of this old stuff that I've got be stored. I know some other JPs use county storage in the basement or something somewhere. I need someplace to store some of this stuff rather than these storage buildings, because even if you get the roof fixed, you're not gonna take care of my rat problem, my other stuff. And we have exterminators that come out. This was an old feed store.
Excuse me, when did you take office?
May of 17.
Of 17. And it was in this condition when you got there in 17?
Yes, sir.
This is absolutely the first time that I have been made aware of the, what's being described as the deplorable conditions of that facility.
Storage. I didn't realize it was that big a problem. I thought we were storing things out there that were not that big a deal, that we had already had on our computer system. These were backup things. I have since found out that's not true. One of the other problems in this is when you did away with JP 6, everything went to JP 5. So most of these things that you're seeing in pictures of tickets just laying around, ledger books on top of stuff, were JP 6 stuff. We don't know what of that we need to keep until we get into it. Some of that stuff can absolutely be shredded. Some of it is absolutely useless. There's no reason for us to keep it. We don't know that until you go through it.
My understanding is all relevant JP 6 information was loaded into, no, it was not loaded into Odyssey.
Not loaded.
Was it?
It was in net data.
It was in net data. But we still have the net data information.
But you don't have the files.
They weren't scanned into net data, because we started scanning into net data a number of years ago, but just like with Odyssey, many of the departments were negligent of doing that. Okay.
It's a mess, but it's no...
Let's see, Judge Barnett took on the JP 6, and that was in...
12.
2011, 12?
12.
Seven years. Okay, I'm just remembering the timeline.
You disagree, Commissioner?
No, hell, it was before me, and I came in.
We did redistrict in 2011, based on the 2010 census.
It may have been 11.
The turn down of JP 6 occurred on January the 1st, 2012.
Okay.
At midnight. And that's when I came under attack, because I put a JP out of work. I was the ugly Commissioner of the year. I remember it very clearly.
The year I thought was 11, but it was.
It was 12. And then we had to move all of those because JP 4 didn't want to assume responsibility of a percentage of JP 6 work, even though part of JP 6 territory went into JP 4. Judge Barnett accepted the responsibility, and he took Jennifer...
In the deal.
In the deal.
Correct.
Because Jennifer was working for JP 6 at the time.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And since she was the one that was most experienced with it, into working through those, okay.
Are there any rooms in the building itself that can be used to storage?
No. We have a storage room that is supplies that will not begin to accommodate. Now, once we get everything scanned, I mean, there's, I'm a very tactile person. I like to pick up a piece of paper and look at it. I'll have to get over that. Once we've got it scanned, we can destroy it. And so that issue will not be long-term. But for now, you know, there's only so many boxes of this stuff that we can go through and get scanned.
Kent, can you pause just a moment?
Sure.
Anne Marie, Mary Margaret, do the JPs fall under records management at all?
Of course they do. Oh, as far as, we have a county set, we have a county records management.
So Kent, all of this, this being discussed, not increasing her budget for records management, we can handle all of this cost through records management?
Probably. I'd have to review the law again, probably.
That would be awesome.
I think we need to do that before a firm decision is made.
That would be awesome. I would love to hand all that off to somebody else. What I was told from the training center is that each JP is responsible for their own. If the county can take it and assume it, that's a win for me.
Well, you know...
You're responsible for your records. Yes, that won't change.
That does not change.
We're just talking about the cost of implementing this.
Of doing it, okay.
Yes.
Someone has to spend the money.
Yeah, it doesn't alleviate your responsibility. It's not handing it off.
So I'm actually still gonna be the one that hires somebody to scan, sets it in my office and base that?
But the funding through records management, that's the question.
Okay.
I'd like to clarify that. The money will not be in your budget.
Correct.
If a part-time individual is hired to do that, it will not be in your budget, but they will work under the direction of your view to do that process, because they will be funded from county records management money.
That's still right. That's still a win for me.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. And that is one of the reasons the state allowed for the collection, so we could do that. You can't buy software with it, but you can run people, hire people with it. Okay.
These records that Judge was talking about, we had offered to burn them, maybe out of the promised land with some of our, but then she was kinda brought up that some of this 10-year records that we thought we didn't have to keep, that we're gonna have them to keep. So that threw that into a whole different, uh, project. Of course, I know Judge Barnett went through some shredding when I was here before, and in the building is still, is terrible. It's never been, it's just bad shape, because of the weather. And I know it's got some leaks, and I thought we was not gonna fix that either, but we will fix all the roof.
My understanding is, when we did that, was to do the complete roof, the roof of everything, so that that issue was completed, because we did not want to piecemeal it. Now, we will verify this, because apparently there's a whole lot of miscommunication going on about that particular building, because this is...
Yes.
This is the first time that we've heard that we had been presented with the files being in this bad a shape, the storage issue. It's the first that I myself have heard about it. The only way I knew that the roof was leaking was through maintenance, when we did the air conditioning.
That was a separate issue.
Still, that's the only maintenance item that I am privy to with that building.
Well, then I have, I have been remiss in not getting it. This, I would come to you earlier with, I just found out what I was responsible for. I just found out that some of these files can go back 24 years. And the only reason, and that's a sad thing, and that's, the only reason we knew this is that debt collectors are coming in and filing judgments. They're coming in and asking for garnishments. They're, and we're having to go out, and these are a lot of things that Judge Barnett ruled on years and years ago. They're coming eight, nine years out.
And these portable buildings that you're using for record storage, are they connected to your building, or are they separate from your building?
They are connected to.
But they are not portable buildings.
No, they're not portable buildings. They have concrete slabs.
Oh, they're additions to the building.
They're additions to the building.
It was a feed store or...
Yeah. Now, some of these, you can kinda tell...
But there's no air conditioning and no heating, I mean, they don't affect it.
This is, this is the back of the actual court as part of that, and this is a...
I understand now. It was all feed stores, so I understand what they did. They just added, yeah.
They just added it.
The room does store feed in, in the back.
And that's what they added it for, when they're here.
Other requests?
No, that's all I have today.
So the recap is the conference in education, that the 1750 that the revised budget was raised to, that you're requesting that that remain in the coming year?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and what conferences are you gonna be sending them to?
They're going to the JP clerk conferences, the Texas Justice Training Center conferences. We had elected to get on our line to legislature in Rockwall, but they're gonna go to Austin, our College of Cross State, just as more convenient for my clerks, it's a little less expensive to get there. And mine will not go together, they're gonna go on separate times.
Okay. What about the OCA training we've heard so much of lately?
Diane West has suggested that I send a rich one clerk to do that. We've been very fortunate, when Jennifer left, Judge Duncan's court sent this clerk over for two days. She went through a lot of stuff that was outdated in our system, we're putting everything back up where we think it needs to be. She went over her part of the OCA reports. Diane West has come in for a couple hours, two or three times, and sat down with my clerks for the OCA reports to make sure they're right. It probably would be beneficial for them to go, or one of them either way to go, but Jamie actually does our OCA reports. It's not an urgent need in my office right now.
You do not feel the same urgency of the OCA as has been, as others do, or...
I do not, because it's working. It's working right now in my court. I know when you guys hired me, rather than having to go through the election at that time, I talked about cooperation, and that we were gonna be willing to talk to you. And poor Judge Duncan, he gets a lot of phone calls from our court. Elena has been awesome. Diane West, we do not hesitate to reach out. And that's worked well, of course. Fider Poise, yeah, we probably learned some of those at a conference. Doing our day-to-day job, we're able to do with the help that we've gotten from Ben and from Diane.
Any other questions?
Just one. So you're asking for 1750 for business travel and conference and education?
Yes, sir.
That's for your office, totally?
Yes, sir. We, when we, now, when we figured out the cost for this past year, when we took registration, we took our knowledge, that's what we came up with. I also went to the judge's school in Rockwall.
Okay. I mean, it's less than what they've had in the past. If you go back to 2015, they had almost $3,000. Oh, excuse me. I'm on the wrong line. Sorry. We got business travel and conference and education. Well, in 2018, it was 1216 and 565.
That was the year I had to do the New Judge School.
Yeah, and in 2017, we had $2,200, $2,300.
I came in right in 2017.
So, I mean, the bottom line is the 17.5.
Where'd you get that $2,300 at?
In 2017, $1,199 and $1,103.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't doing the business travel. I got you.
Okay.
And some of that was, again, New Judge School was started at the end of 2017 and finished in 2018.
Well, I don't have a problem with 17.5. I was just pointing out that there's a couple of low years in there, but overall, it's been averaging around $2,000 going back to 2015. So that was a supporting comment for your request.
I know any issues you have in the future with that building, we need to know about them.
Absolutely.
And that does not need to linger where we have ourselves in a position to where that the court can be viewed as culpable in not allowing you to do your, to do your functions. I really wanna know every issue that happens with that facility.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To add to what the judge just said, it is always annoying to the commissioners' court in general to find something out like this during budget. It's sort of like getting your butt chewed out at 9:00 in the morning because there's a fall in on a road, and no one, and it's been there, you're told, it's been there for three weeks, and no one that lives on that road ever bothered to call and tell you that they had a problem. You are the folks that are in that building every day, and it's the same way with every other facility. I mean, if sheriff doesn't say that he has a commode that is running nonstop, and then we look at the bills and we find out that, well, we have a high water bill, and he's, well, the commode's been running for a month. We're not upset that the commode broke, we're upset that no one let us know to take the action to get it fixed. I'm upset with a constituent that lives on a darn road who couldn't pick up the phone and say, "We've got a problem." And every, all of us commissioners face this all the time. I keep telling folks, and I have for eight and a half years, the best inspector I can hope to have for precinct four roads are the people that live on that road. We look at you and your staff the same way. If there's a problem with that building, and it goes for every JP that's in a separate facility, if there's a problem, you gotta let us know, because we're not gonna be coming out there doing a quarterly inspection to see if there's a problem.
And I appreciate that, because my understanding was for no maintenance, and that's where we can go.
County judge's office is over maintenance. If you do not get any response from them, I need to know about it.
Okay, got it. I appreciate that, because now I know where to go.
I know, I know that during our air conditioning change-out, we had quite a bit of communication, but that, that's been it.
And of course, if, just like the judge said, if none of those things work, then you go to your neighbor.
My neighbor has been my first stop. I'll have to testify.
So, you know, and then it's, you've handed that off to him for additional support, and he's bringing it back to the judge and the commissioners' court to help you get it resolved.
Correct. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Some of the, some of the paperwork that she had, that I thought was just gonna get burned, we would handle now, finding out we need to, need to scan it, so.
Right. And that was simply, I did not know.
Till recently.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Fire marshal, you get five extra minutes or four extra minutes?
I'm gonna need them.
I'd like to know why you didn't, if you're taking care of the vending machines now, why you didn't know that roof was leaking out there? You're falling down on all these additional responsibilities.
I know. Well, I'll look at it.
Okay. Good enough.
So, thank y'all, I guess I'll do the normal thing. Thank y'all for letting me come in and discuss my budget. I will say, it's the first time since I've been the fire marshal that I'm not coming asking for a position to be added to my office, so I'll start with that. Realistically, I don't have any, any major changes. Actually, after I submitted this on STW, I looked at it a little bit further and found an item that I need to reduce some money out of. If you want me to go line by line, the only thing I really can consider, want to change is on my tires, I added $100 to it because for some reason I was always about $84 short of buying two sets of tires a year. But if you go further down to other professional services, last year where we put extra money into that lineup, because the state lab was no longer taking our Arsenia or Canton, so first and middle, they are back up and running now. Not through the Texas Department of Insurance, but now through the, like the drug labs, they're pretty much all going to the same area. So I would like to reduce that down to $1,000 instead of $3,000, because I'm not gonna need that. The only time that I would still need to use a private lab like Armstrong or something like that is if I have a major fire or possibly fatality fire that we need a 24, 48-hour turnaround instead of six to nine months that we might get for the free service. And then, of course, different from last year, last year there was not a vehicle on the buzzer line. This year, I did put one in there. If you recall, last year, you added a position to my office, and then I got a vehicle from the sheriff's department. And that vehicle at this time is, it's in bad shape. And the judge drove it around one day. I know we have money in the contingency fund for it now, that y'all placed in there, but I'm gonna head and put it in next year's budget in case the court didn't want to spend the contingency from this year. So either way, it's about time where I'm gonna have to start replacing these vehicles about one a year, and I've read one a year, and trying to get three, four, or five every four or five years.
That vehicle that you're referring to is former Constable Five's Tahoe that is en route, front bumper's zip-tied on. There are several issues with it. We requested that the fire marshal make do with this as long as he could. We did make provisions in the contingency fund to purchase a vehicle for his office. We can do that today if the court wishes to move forward and forego this allotment here in his budget. We've had many things going on, some of us have discussed it, I'm sure the fire marshal has discussed it with us. We just haven't officially taken action to do so. If, I would like to see us go ahead and buy it this year.
Well, without any contingency, I'd rather do it this year.
I would, too.
And that would actually work good with the replacing the vehicles down the line in order, instead of having to...
Put you back in kind of a...
It would put me back in, kind of like the sheriff's department, how they replace their vehicles so often. That way, they don't have to buy an entire fleet at one time in about a few years.
So you would start the vehicle replacement in the 2021 budget, though?
I'm not sure. I want to say that I'm, that I might be able to start in the 2022 budget.
Okay.
Because of the mileage on our vehicles, and we're doing pretty good with the mileage on, we're getting up there in the mileage, but I feel like it's hard for me to tell. Maybe I come back next year and say, "Look, I'm sorry, I misjudged," but I'm hoping I can stretch it to 2022 before we start replacing them.
Okay.
But we made provisions in contingency to get him on this year.
This year, in 2019, correct.
Correct.
So we can...
That would eliminate that part of his budget right there, if we did that.
Yes.
Then the only change in my budget, of course, would be the $100 increase on the tires I started buying two years, and then have decreased the other professional services from $3,000 down to $1,000.
Okay. Lynn, can you make those changes?
Yes, sir.
$1,000 on professional and the deletion of the vehicle? How are your numbers looking? We know that weather is affecting road and bridge operations and other things. How is it affecting your operations? We don't have the rash of fires.
It's a bird man, so. If you're going to make me say it, you're not going to wood. This has been a slow year for most professional fires. Don't make me say it again because it's.
Three times.
Yes. So actually, on fires this year, we've had 323. That is running lower than the 1,200 fires we had last year total, so we should be about half there. Pretty close to half. We're running a little bit lower. As far as our public nuisance goes, we have public nuisance, 616 cases so far this year. That's up, of course, from adding that position. The sewage complaints are up as well. We've handled 68 of those. 106 illegal dumping cases so far this year.
The sewage complaints, that was driven by change in law session before last, right?
Yes, sir.
So two years.
Do you think the complaints have driven, been up because of the law or because of the running?
I think it's probably a combination. A lot of it's also that we now provide that service. We provide a good service. Mr. Bailey does a great job for us. The word got around that we were taking care of those complaints. Of course, he's the one certified to look at those systems and tell us whether or not it's malfunctioning, but our office has to actually go out and enforce that portion of the law or write the citations. So it's an account. We work together on that, but I just think the word got out that we were actually taking care of it, so people started calling when they had issues.
My point in bringing it up is the fact that it is an additional service, and we're seeing this more and more from the state on departments like the Fire Marshal. I'm sure you'll speak to that more, of pushing down those issues, because before then, there was no legal mechanism tying together with law enforcement. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, correct. Before, it basically, someone like Mr. Bailey himself could go to a JP and file a complaint or something like that. And I think there's still an avenue for him to do that, but it's not enforceable like a citation would be if you had. And then they went and changed the law and threw it under what, please don't get this confused with regular public nuisance, but under the public nuisance section, I guess, of the Health and Safety Code is where they went and threw that under there. So, of course, then it falls back on the office. Also in that, our inspections this year have been 170. So that seems to be rather than usual. This year, we have a few less. Like I stated earlier, our testing report the other day goes up towards the end of the year. Everybody likes to hit us or not in or using or trying to be, get their inspection done for them. I can tell you, so I thought I could. For the, basically, for the illegal dumping and public nuisance together, we've written 122 citations this year for those. Well, 122 tickets, and some of those have three citations in these. But we have been able to get more of those properties actually cleaned up this year that is actually hiring. So out of the 780 calls that we've done this year for that, it's 376 have been made it. I mean, if somebody cleaned them up, the dollars have to actually write them a citation.
When you're dealing with public nuisance, of course, you have to go through the whole process, notification, citation. There's a great number of notifications written. I'm wondering what the percentage is of what gets started and what is actually adjudicated in court, because all these go to the JP courts, and the JP courts have jurisdiction over all of these. So can you flesh that out a little bit? And there's prosecution involved in all of that.
Sure, you have prosecution.
In law enforcement, you just take it to them and they go from there, but I'm wondering how, how far we're getting down the line with them, and how many of them are just either dismissed or non-prosecuted?
I would say it varies through the JP's. Sometimes we write three citations to one property, and the, for lack of a better term, going rate is to dismiss two of those to get somebody to pay one.
Normal process.
Normal process. Sometimes we write one citation on it. And so I guess, I don't know if it's looked at as maybe we've taken away that little bargaining cookie or something. I don't know. Sometimes it is, sometimes they're charged. And the fines vary. The illegal dumping fines vary. We have some people that are fined maximum for illegal dumping and then charge the person who dumped restitution because the county had to go and clean it up. And we have some that are charged $50, and, you know, there's no restitution or anything. It's puzzling.
Well, we just put a lot of money toward enforcement of this and then to not having, what one might consider a final return, because the whole thing is to get the county cleaned up. And that's something that, wow, go back to 2004, '03, that's how long we've been trying to do this program, and we have met many obstacles along the way, you know, from manpower. Oh, somebody's going to have to take my phone out. Manpower, you know, to just getting hurt in court. And so that was why I was wanting, this is a discussion we've had many times about public nuisance, not with this makeup of court, but years back, so.
You mentioned 2004. I believe that was the rollout of Operation Clean Sweep, taking adult probationers on a rotational basis to each one of the precincts. The first weekend of the month went to Precinct One, second weekend of the month went to Precinct Two, and so on. And that was a pretty good program, where there was 30, 35 adult probationers would show up at the county barn, and you would have a road selected to go out and pick up trash. But three years ago, the district judges decided probation for adults was good enough, and they just went to work, kind of like what you and I do. Go to work. We didn't go out and commit a crime. We promised to go to work. That's our probation. So we lost that program. I mean, it went from 30, dropped down to 20, then it was, without us Commissioners even knowing about it, if two people show up. And that's when we found out the program had been abolished. Now, we rely on our good Sheriff's Department on a monthly basis to get on the horses and clean up a road. And basically, he can only do about one road a month. Well, our wonderful citizens, you know, they can litter more than one road a month, because they litter nonstop. They work on our right-of-way faster than the gophers are burrowing under the rows and causing the rows to collapse. Is there any way that we can put pressure back on the probation program to get that Clean Sweep initiative back in place? Because, I mean, when we say we're trying to clean up the county, well, you know, I certainly wouldn't want that in the paper, because the citizens would say we're doing a miserable job.
Many of those issues, I think, separating two public nuisance from our cleanup, you know, I know that's the same thing, but yet there are a couple of different areas of responsibility.
Absolutely.
I do know that some of, we speak a lot of OCA, Office of Court Administration. They are the right hand and the left hand of the judicial program, laying out what you can and cannot do based on regulations. They are the bureaucrats that lay out the rules, and I believe there have been some changes over the years due to state law and case law on why the judges began instituting, if you got a job, it counts as community service. It is a, with public nuisance, it being those individuals on the property. I agree with you, Commissioner, 100%. I agree. The Commissioners' Court takes a beating on trash issues regardless. I get a letter once a week, twice a week, about individuals complaining because we can't clean a place up. And that was why I was going into this line of questioning. You're exactly right. We get the calls on, you know.
I mean, you brought 2004, so.
Well, I agree. I agree. I agree.
I guess the best way to answer your question, the one thing that I see the most, is that there's no order to abate these properties when we do issue citations on them. And the law says that they shall be ordered to abate. That would help us terminate these claims, because we have people that we have followed on 20 times.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're waiting, you know, we've written 17 citations before they even go to court on the first one. And when they go to court on the first one, they're like, "Well, we'll grab these other 16 here that you have and work this all out in one deal." Maybe they paid their fine or whatever. I don't really get involved in that side of it.
Well, let me ask a question. You don't have a Fire Marshal Facebook page, do you?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Oh. So when you take our surveillance cameras, and that's kind of an embedded question, do you need more surveillance cameras in your budget? And while you think about that, I'll.
I never buy those. I would buy a regular lawn without having to have a special lawn or anything.
So do you think you have enough surveillance cameras and you have enough in your budget to buy more surveillance cameras?
That just kind of is, sir.
Okay. So when you put the surveillance cameras out there, and it is clear in the video who, by the license number and what he was throwing, or she was throwing into the bar ditch or into the flowing stream, and you send them the citation and they go to JP Court, is there any law saying that you can't put that up on the Facebook and let everyone know? Here it is, folks. We're watching.
No, absolutely not, and we have done that. We, you know, typically, depending on what it is, if it's a bad enough case, we give warrants. We're only put them in jail and put the book info on there and say, you know, "Don't dump in Henderson County. We're watching."
Well, I think we need to propagate that louder. There was a friend of mine, Commissioner, that basically did that, because, matter of fact, he captured a picture of someone throwing, I think it was a toilet or something, a commode, in the bar ditch, and then a few days later, that person called and said, "You need to come out and pick it up." And he tied him together, and it was the guy that threw it in the ditch then called the Commissioner and told him to go pick it up. Commissioner said, "Well, you should have asked me. I would just come to the house rather than have to get it out of bar ditch." I think we need to do something. If we're serious about making Henderson County beautiful, those that don't care about it, I think, you know, there should be, their pictures should be out there on the internet. Let them think about it when they're throwing out their mattress, bark and lounger, tires, that we get calls on. And the thing is, with tires, we can't, if we don't catch them with a surveillance camera, we have no way to trace them, where they're coming from.
Yes, that's true. But in the instance that you were talking about, if we had been notified, we could have just talked to them and.
We would also, if we put it on Facebook, it might have the JP's be less willing to dismiss it.
Any other questions, discussion?
So you said when you write those tickets, and per se, let's talk about the boat that was dumped in Precinct Two. We will never know. How will we know that that guy paid his money, or what happened to that case where it just got thrown out, because we already dumped it and picked it up and all that?
Sure. So that was called in Mark Hall's office, because that was a penalty illegal dump. You know, we found out who it was, got a warrant, put him in jail, Mark Hall can have the case over there in your office. I don't know what's happened to it or anything.
Anything else? Anything you want to add in closing?
I don't. I just appreciate the course of time. I also appreciate what y'all are trying to do with the paint program you're talking about. I think it's a good idea. So I appreciate that. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Can I come in?
Please.
Sheriff, we talked about them coming out and doing a road a month or whatever. That has really helped, Sheriff, and I know that's terrible what you're having to do, but it is really helped in my area. I have had a lot of responses back where, and of course, they're going to come back and throw it out again. I mean, we're not stopping it. I know we got, it's not the answer, but it is definitely helping on Precinct One. And I know it's a big job, but I do really appreciate what y'all are doing on the individual onesy-twozys stuff.
Okay. Anything else? If we don't have a problem with, we're a little ahead of schedule. We can either take a break right quick, take a 10-minute break if we need to.
Let's do one more.
If you want to do one more.
That would be my recommendation.
Or do you need now?
I can wait, maybe. I got a cup over here.
Let's do a five-minute break. How's that?
All right.
Let's take a five-minute break. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, so. Let's take a five-minute break. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, so.
Take effort and coordination, I believe, not only to them but also the county clerk's office, given that those deed instruments, those land instruments would be in there, you're talking about recording, but we can, we can look at that. And we can also have discussions with our current vendor.
Right.
And suggestions for him, because with his past history.
It would be important with his past history to do something like that.
Exactly.
You wanted to say something?
I was gonna say that since Mr. Bailey come on board, every system that we have permitted as far back as we can go, we have went and found these original, I guess, drawings for these systems, and all of those have been filed at my office now. So if we know the address, if we can tie it to the permit, we can actually pull it up because my secretary has scanned them. So at this point now, since every new system that's permitted has to be designed.
Right.
We actually have copies of those designs on file.
So it wouldn't be that hard then to get the county clerk to tie those back to those particular plots?
Uh, we're not that sure.
Well, that's good news.
We at least have the information. Working on the mechanism may, may take a little bit. I can look from our county clerk that yes, but we need to figure out a mechanism.
But it's doable, I'm sure it's doable.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else before we go into our next guest? Okay, we have Fairgrounds with us today. Bob, Jim Bob? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Twenty-four, twenty-three is the line number.
Oh, bad, twenty-fourteen. We are again having a very good year at the Fairgrounds. I expect to come in and ask you.
Sorry, don't believe the microphone is on.
Actually have a plus year, and we will end up, it is pretty much the same as what we presented last year. Again, this year, we're asking the county to, the budget that was approved by the court last year, again, we asked for seventy-five thousand, not to spend fifty thousand dollars of our capital plan, so at least we had, would have a zero budget instead of a negative budget. We've actually had two things that occurred that actually we think is gonna give us a positive year. The fact that we did not spend fifty thousand dollars of our capital plan. We also, the third full-time employee was not hired until a couple of weeks ago. So therefore, we had about eighteen thousand dollars in payroll savings because it took us six months to find that person. In addition to that, Jim Bob has done an excellent job of selling advertisement, and we, we're gonna have, we will sell somewhere in excess of thirty-two thousand dollars worth of advertising banners in the Coliseum, and we'd only budgeted for twenty. So, let me in general say that the board's approach to how we spend our capital budget, and typically, I think for the last three or four years, it's been a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is number one, we start out with the intent to not spend twenty-five to thirty-five percent of that budget with the intent that that will go into reserves. And if you look at our capital plan, and again, like we did with the parking lot several years ago, if we had not built up those reserves, we could not afford it to buy the materials to do that project. That's why we feel it's important to continue to build our reserves every year, because some of these bigger projects, we have to save for them now to be able to afford them later on. And I also want to point out that over the last two years, the City of Athens, through hotel motel taxes and through AEDC, has funded over forty thousand dollars in the past two years to the Fairgrounds in matching funds. So they've actually funded more than the county has to the Fairgrounds in cash. And again, I anticipate them doing that again this year. We will be making submissions to them later this year. And again, our board intends to ask for matching funds, and they were in excess of, it's a forty thousand dollar budget project to replace another twenty-four stalls, and we'll be asking the City of Athens to fund matching funds out of hot taxes for that. And again, late in the year, we will make application to AEDC again for summer funding. And at this point right now, our intent is to add fans to the back horse stall barn. It's a project at this time, but that's subject change when we actually come to make that application. And again, I want to impress the impact. If you look at the numbers and how busy that facility is, two things, you know, it requires constant maintenance. We have to keep updating what's there as well as make necessary improvements and repairs. And I would say without a doubt, it is the busiest facility in the state of Texas for a facility of its type. When you look at any of the neighboring towns, even Tyler, Telford Springs, some of the others, no one is doing the type of activity that we're doing at a county facility. And the county has made, I mean, they've got a three, four million dollar investment in that, in buildings and property out there. And it takes, we have to plan on maintaining and keeping that facility up to its current status, and by saving reserves and by putting the funding in, then we'll have the funds to do the major projects that need to be done. Because with the wear and tear the facility is receiving, it does take constant repairs and upgrades and maintenance. And we need to continue to attract the shows and be able to get them. And the financial impact for the county is in the millions of dollars that the tourism spends when we do these shows and these large numbers come in. So I would encourage the county commissioner to think about that when they think about the additional fifty thousand dollars we're asking for, because it is a direct impact on the economy of the county.
Okay.
On behalf to any questions about our legislative question.
Questions? The events sheet you gave me, is that up or is that about the same?
It's up slightly. I'm all at Jim Bob. We've lost a couple of shows, picked up a couple of shows. Some of it was, they requested, some of them we had a chance. The two-day show percentage is up from last year.
Okay.
So we've gotten rid of some one-day shows.
Okay, one more of the two-day or more.
And we did a show in the National Series, had close to eighteen hundred teams at a three-day event. So you're talking about several, several thousands of people just at that one event. And they had a problem with the hotel motel because they were all full.
They were full.
So that.
That's the team roping.
Impact on.
The team roping, is that what you're talking about?
This World Series.
Right.
But we've, we've stayed probably back in that vein for the last two to three years.
Okay.
But it will fluctuate, you know, different shows coming in. If we can eliminate a one-day or two-day, we'll do it. If we can eliminate a two-day or four-day, we'll do it.
I got you.
Yeah, strictly.
Makes sense.
We do stay around sixty events per year.
Okay. The forty-six stalls in progress, the horse stalls or?
Yeah, twenty-four of those we paid for, Athens Hot Fund Tax, are now fifty percent matching. Twenty-four, we've actually paid for the seven stalls, and we're waiting for the opportunity. We're having to go in, we take down the old stall, we're gonna take that dirt out and recompact it and put more clay in.
I got you.
And so we received the, well, the Hot Fund stalls earlier in the year, but then we've made, we don't make the AEDC grant until the first of the year. And so therefore, we just got the AEDC stalls in, but we will be doing that in the next execution.
Do events like the Long Star High School Royal Finals, do they rotate or do they pretty much come here?
No, sorry, they come here. And actually, we've added, we've added actually three more this year events from Long Star. They are primarily wanting to come to our facility instead of move around. They really like our facility and they're gonna keep their file.
It looks like the majority of the one-day shows, one time per year, are local events. And it's good to see that we're continuing that tradition, because in the original concept of the facility, it was created for the youth of Henderson County. That was the initial. When you go back forty years ago, forty, forty-five, I don't remember how old I am. And that's good to see that it's continuing with that.
I would also like to point out, and I hope y'all had a chance to drive by and seen the progress on the entrance. And, you know, that is gonna be a tremendous improvement perception-wise when you pull in there.
It's going to be a big difference.
Keep Athens Beautiful, you know, was able to submit that request and get that funding of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to do that project. And Keep Athens Beautiful does an annual event at the Fairgrounds, so there's a fundraiser for them. And in the past, we have charged them, that one-day charge, so we're deciding based on what they did for the Fairgrounds, that we waive that fee this year, and we will waive it in the future.
What do they do?
Keep Athens Beautiful.
I know, what do they do? What is their?
They do, they do beautification projects and.
Yeah, but what do they use the facility for? Did you say?
They do a fundraiser type thing and they do.
It's a home and garden show.
Oh, home and garden, okay.
It's the home and garden show that used to be conducted at the Kane Center.
Yeah.
And they've moved it to the Fair Park.
I got you.
I think the, the work on the parking lot, the addition of the new entrance, is making our facility highly desirable. I think if, last year, we voted to allow the gardeners, the master gardeners, to put a facility down there, and I think that gets a lot of traffic in there.
Yeah, they're making a good project. They've got, they've got.
It's gonna be a nice area.
It's gonna be a nice attraction and bring in additional people there every week to the facility.
Do any of these events besides the livestock show entail the usage of the Senior Citizens Building as well?
Uh, there's a couple. Superdrive this past week utilized the facility for their bike tour. And, I believe that's it.
The arboretum, or the, the flower sale. They use that facility often.
Yeah, they do have a flower sale there. Full rate to utilize that. I know that the Horse Committee, they have their tax law, it's used up there. That's why they're in the fundraiser to, that's what they do every year.
Okay. Any, I know that with our shared responsibility of that facility, give us an idea on how our current operations are working as far as oversight being handled on the Fairgrounds end, and scheduling and being taken care of from this end. How is that working out?
As far as the schedule, a lot of these shows that you see here, such as the Palomitas, they've been coming up for twenty-five.
I think he's talking, Jim Bob, I think he's talking about how you and Heather are working.
Yeah, how are yourself and the scheduler of the Senior Citizens Building, that relationship? How is that working with?
Oh, that's, that's been, that's on our side.
Okay.
Yes, and they're really great help as far as this, and we pay back and forth as far as, you know, when to make people have a shoulder, hands and outs of doing this and that has been a huge help.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
I see y'all didn't put anything in the budget for y'all to have me out with her.
I gave you the same thing that Reeve and Jim gave me when I stepped over the front. Yeah, there was that, wasn't there? There was that, because it started in the county judge's office several years ago, and then you're the third scheduler.
Volunteer for that, hoping we'd pick up half the salary from here. But I got the refund, but he did not get it.
But the previous county judge said that he gave you a gift of hotel motel.
Yeah, there you go.
He thought that was a quid pro quo.
Tomato, tomato. Well, we are very fortunate to have the facility, and we are very fortunate to have the relationship that we do with the Fair Board and the staff that runs the operation. The facility has come a long way in the last twenty years, and that has been through cooperation, planning, and at times teeth gnashing among the organizations. But it truly has been a pleasure. And when you see what we have now from where we started, we're really blessed, and we appreciate the.
Well, you know, Sally's very unique, number one. Number two, Jim Bob has done this a few days, carried on what went in starting. Because the reason we have so many continuing people come back is because of customer service. It's Jim Bob and his staff who do that. Because the people go and shoot, so they'll find some less stuff to go.
Yeah. It's fair to say that these individuals are looking for value, and they find that value in the customer service. When you look at the client demographic, they put a heavy weight on customer service. So. Other questions, comments?
Judge's turn. You done? I guess it is to me. It, it wasn't mentioned, you pointed out, Keep Athens Beautiful's participation in the new entrance. But it wasn't mentioned what a huge, huge benefit it is to the folks that use the Senior Citizens Building, that they can now exit the Fair Park safely rather than driving the wrong way on a divided highway. I don't know if everyone realizes that going into the Senior Citizens Building, if you were headed eastbound, it was safe. But if you were traveling westbound and the Fair Park gate was closed, they had to go clear up to Brinson Ford and turn around and come back to enter into the Senior Citizens Building safely. Well, I'm here to tell you, most people didn't waste that time. They just drove at a diagonal across Highway thirty-one into the Senior Citizens Building. And I will emphasize, senior citizens were doing that. It's a wonder there hadn't been a catastrophic accident that occurred there. So it's a huge safety improvement for the Senior Citizens Building. One, one comment that you made, you pointed out that there was more funding coming from AEDC and the City of Athens than what the county was doing. Did you mean that on the capital side?
Well, and the county is funding twenty-five thousand dollars, what they have funded for the last four years. And the last three years, you know, the city now appreciates what the facility does for the City of Athens, and they have, they're, we're getting our fair share.
But that is on the capital. Okay. I mean, it could be perceived that, you know, we didn't, the Fair Park was funding Jim Bob's salary and benefits and so on and so forth. And that, that's not the case. Do you, do you, as the chairman of the board, have the same concerns that I, I currently do with the situation at the AEDC?
Yes, I do not know what to expect right now. I'm still optimistic, because the city council and city manager are very important of the Fairgrounds. We're doing everything to make the end of world for them.
So after the, the many years of hard work by the board, in particular yourself and Lee Tackett, the city realizes that when there is horses at the Fair Park, that means that there's sales tax being generated for the city. I mean, a few years ago, they didn't understand the correlation. So there again, I think you and the board have come a long way in educating the city council on what this, what type of impact it has.
I agree with that, but I also think a lot has to be attributed to the city manager. And not that, you know, Mayor McGonagall, that it's just fantastic and wonderful.
Good. I have no other, no other questions.
Okay. Any closing statements for we? Well, we do appreciate y'all very much.
Yeah, we appreciate what the commission do, the AEDC, who we're talking about, having to do dirt down, and lending us a machine to do that. We appreciate your constant efforts. This is a great asset to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, and we are five minutes ahead, is Mrs. Nor with the library.
What's that number?
That's what I'm looking for, Liam. There it is. Thank you, ma'am.
Seventeen twenty-four.
Seventeen twenty-four.
Thank you.
Good morning. I expect you want to know a little bit about what's going on in the library. Of course, we have all kinds of resources for the community. Books, audiobooks, access to ebooks, DVDs. Mobile hotspots are new this year. They're very popular. All these things can be checked out. In the library, we have eight public computers. We have twenty-four seven Wi-Fi, research databases, copy, fax, scan, printing services. We have a die-cut machine that's new to the library this year, and we have the cheapest notary in town. We have programs which are free to the community. Adult computer classes, book club, weekly movie night, anime club, baby time, storytime, daycare outreach, and our summer reading program, which is a collection of programs in itself. The library's summer reading program is an effort to combat what teachers call the summer slide. More than eighty percent of children from low-income families lose reading skills during the summer. We have more than three hundred kids enrolled this summer. They are reading to horses at Black Beauty Ranch. They are reading to fish at the fishery. They are reading to their parents, their grandparents, their siblings, but most importantly, they are reading on their own. Summer is our busy season. There are lots of fun and educational events planned throughout the summer. The goal is to encourage children to visit the library regularly. On Thursdays, those are our busiest days. Those are the days we have most of our summer reading programs. And the library has been welcoming more than six hundred people this June on Thursdays. On June thirteenth, Mark Shelton, a professional musician, came to teach us all about percussion. What I was surprised about when I attended that session, and as you know, this is my first year here, almost half of the crowd were summer school kids from Athens ISD. Athens ISD is busing their summer school children to the library's summer reading programs. We regularly have a band load of daycare kids from Malakoff. ACPA brings all of their students in grades four through twelve to the library every January for instruction in research and databases. People ask me all the time if I miss teaching, but what's to miss? Because year-round, the library is a hub of educational activity, and I think that's something that y'all can be proud of. As for the budget, I first want to talk about a guy named Taren. Taren's a great guy. He is energetic, polite, service-oriented, smart, reliable, professional. He is a great employee, but he doesn't work for me. He used to work for me. He did various tasks around the library. He was so helpful. One day, the library had too many twenty-dollar bills, and we needed more one-dollar bills. So Taren walked across the parking lot to First State Bank, and they gave him change, and they offered him a job. Like I said, he's a smart guy. The job they offered him, better pay, better hours, better opportunity for advancement. Of course, he took it with my blessing. I'm happy for him. When he resigned, he stapled his volunteer application to the back of his resignation letter. He does a monthly Saturday program at the library still, and on his lunch hour, he walks over to the library to help us out. He didn't leave because he didn't like working at the library. Taren's new job at the bank and his old job at the library have some similarities. Both are part-time jobs. Both include customer service, database projects, social media. His job at the library also included assisting people with computers, helping him set up email, managing library resources, updating the library's website, supervising community service volunteers, organizing a program, lifting heavy things. He closed the library two nights a week, and he worked two Saturdays a month. The bank is paying him eleven dollars an hour. We were paying him nine fifty an hour. So the story has a happy ending for Taren. He's got a great job at the bank, and I think it's a cautionary tale for the rest of us. So I would like to pay the part-time employees at the library ten dollars an hour. So I've asked for an additional two thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars in that line item. That's fifty cents multiplied by the estimated five thousand ninety-six hours that part-time library employees may work next year. Ten dollars an hour still won't be enough for what they do and the hours they work, but I know that they would greatly appreciate it. I've also asked for an additional one thousand dollars in the full-time. The assistant director at Henderson County Library, Renata Mayo, makes $31,563. The same position at Ellis County makes $37,000. And the same position at Kaufman County makes $33,000. Renata started out at the library as a part-time employee in 2018. She still does all of those part-time tasks. Plus, now she orders and catalogs books, prepares deposits, manages the library technology, and does a million other things. Renata is worth much more than she is being paid. The children's services manager at Henderson County Library, Bobby Hall, makes $29,159. The same position at Kaufman County makes $33,000. And the same position at Russ County makes $31,428. Bobby studies pedagogy on her own. She is devoted to children's literature. And her experience in the library has been invaluable over the past 18 months, when every single one of her coworkers resigned from the library. Bobby is worth much more than she is being paid. I've also requested an additional $200 for postage because in 2019, we exceeded the budget. Sorry. But I don't want to stop sending thank you letters when people donate money to the library. Finally, I've requested an additional $500 in the conference budget because in April, the assistant director and I attended the one conference that we are expected to attend, and we went over the $1,500 budget. Between conference registration, hotel, and transportation, we spent $1,950. So the requested increases, all involving the general fund, total $4,248. In 2019, the library had $4,129 in the budget for longevity. No one working at the library currently qualifies for longevity pay. So essentially, I'm asking that the library's longevity pay be redistributed to the other line items. When all the math is done, I'm asking that the library's budget for 2020 be increased by $119. If you were inclined to allocate more money, it would be put to good use. I've been at the library for less than a year, so I'm still learning how the annual budget works, and I'm still learning how far I can stretch it. I don't want to do that thing where I ask for the moon because I really want the stars. I believe that all of the increases I'm requesting are justifiable and very modest. And I hope you agree. Do you have any questions for me?
How are the numbers holding this year compared to last year? What are we seeing as far as visits in total?
It's increased. It's increasing with summer this year. We're seeing a huge increase in summer. And once they develop that habit, we're hoping those people will continue to come in fall. But right now, we are ahead of where we were last year.
Okay. In our accreditation, Commissioner, you may have to help my memory. We had the waiver out of Boston on our service area. Can you speak to that?
Normally, for accreditation for a county library, they consider the population the population of the county. We did get a waiver, so this library, they are using the population numbers that AISD is using. And that is going to hold for the next three years. They have agreed that that's the population they will consider. And with that population, we're good for accreditation.
And that keeps the opportunities for grant funding.
Right. Which, and we're getting some grant money coming in for books and things.
Fantastic. Three more years on that. Fantastic. Questions?
Y'all still have, are you still issuing library cards and stuff like that?
We do. Anybody with a current photo ID in Henderson County gets a library card for free. If they are out of the county, they pay a one-time $30 fee, and they get to get a library card as well.
And how many members do you have?
Um, out of the county or total? Okay. Yeah, total, we have about 11,500 right now.
And then out of county?
A couple hundred, not very many. We get a, I don't want to say this in public, we get a lot from Canton. People tell us all the time they'd rather come to our library than the library in Canton.
Who on the conference, was it you that was asking on the conference, I think? $500 increase?
Yes.
Just you?
Well, we go to one conference, but it's always two people that go.
Okay.
So that's why it's kind of hard to manage with them.
You and?
Renata, the assistant director.
The assistant director. Okay, what about the children's services manager?
She goes to local things. She went to one in Tyler. She goes to the one in Dyball. She goes to the ones that she can make in one day. She doesn't do any overnights.
I see. Okay. And who is that, by the way?
Bobby Hall.
Okay. Commissioner?
How many part-time people do you have?
I'm, uh, four part-time people, three full-time, and four part-time positions. We're short one right now, but there should be more.
But there's four part-times, and you're asking for the $10 on all four, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But that wouldn't have been enough to keep the employee that went to work for First State Bank?
I mean, generally, people working in libraries aren't there for the money. But sometimes, when the job offer is so good, it doesn't always, it's hard to refuse.
Considering it was right next door.
Yeah.
I have no other questions. Good presentation.
Thank you.
I'm going to feed off the commissioners. Out of those three that you have right now, what's their longevity?
Let's see. One started in February, one started yesterday. And, yeah, they're, like I said, it's all new. And one started one year ago.
And why did those other, those other part-times leave?
One retired. And one got a better job offer. Sometimes, part-time leave because they need benefits. And that's not something that they can get as a part-time library employee, obviously. That's a big issue.
And how long is your assistant director?
She started, Renata, when did you start?
September of last year.
I'm sorry?
September of 2018.
Okay.
Anything else?
I would say by the numbers and everything, you're doing a great job compared to where things and technology is going. Uh, the internet and things like that, people are still able to use the library, so.
People need the library now more than ever. A lot of people don't realize that. We see people all the time coming in, needing help with resume, filling out online job applications. You know, there are a lot of places, you can't fill out a paper application anymore. If you don't have access to a computer, then you don't even get to apply for the job.
And I see that in our area of, in the school districts, of being economically disadvantaged to not have an internet access or a computer.
Right. And even now, they're enrolling in school online, so we're seeing a lot of families come through. And, yeah, they need help from the library because they say they can't get it at this point. Okay.
Commissioner Tulley, if we go back 12 months, the turnover in the library is when the big change happened, when Rachel Cox resigned to be a stay-at-home mom. And that opened the director's position that Michelle filled. Shortly thereafter, the assistant retired or went to work somewhere else or went back to school, I'm not sure what, but took a different career path. So, in essence, the two key people we had in the library, starting off in 2018, evaporated. So, I think the key thing is, in the short time, the two key people in our library have been in place, by the presentation given by Michelle, shows that no balls were dropped. In actuality, there was a couple new balls picked up. She just pointed out internet access. Over the same period of time, if we go back to 2017, I think we had 10 or 15 meg of access or something like that for the four, five, six public computers over there. Through the efforts of the library staff, we applied for the grant, E-RATH.
E-Rate.
E-Rate. And we now have 60 meg worth of bandwidth at the library, so ample capacity for those public computers with good speed and access. So, and that's being, through being state accredited. If we're not accredited, we could not have received the E-Rate rate for that service from the internet provider. So, good presentation.
I agree. Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate your efforts. And, of course, being new to the process, this will continue on these discussions until the end of August. So, fantastic work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We're getting faster and faster. We went from five ahead to 15 ahead. The next scheduled one up is Spencer Perkins with County Extinction Agency. And if you would, please, sir. And Lynn?
I blow it.
What's the?
I blow it.
Right below it?
Well, two below it.
Two below it.
Thank you, Spencer.
Pretty good, aren't you, this one?
Oh, there it is. Seventeen seventy-eight. Please proceed, sir.
Yes, sir. So, I'm new to this process as well, so I apologize if y'all need something that I didn't bring, but my budget's pretty simple this year. We, only thing that I was asking for is to bring, as y'all are aware, we have two secretaries in our office. And I would just like to bring those more level with each other. They both do equal amount of work and equal responsibility for our offices. Those have been split. I was looking back for several years now, and we just hired one last year after having a secretary leave, rip for retirement. And so, I would just like to bring both positions up equal. And that only, the raising budget is just, that salary is the only thing. Everything else, we'd like to leave the same.
Okay.
How long has both of them been there?
So, the longest tenured one has been there right at 12 years, I believe. And then our newest secretary has been hired on for a big year in July. Charlotte Paris was the secretary for 26 years. And she left and obviously helped our budget out a lot with longevity. And that's been the only change.
You want to bring your new secretary up equal with your 12-year secretary?
Well, and I may be understanding this wrong, what I'd like to do is have both secretaries budgeted for the same, and then obviously step the new one up as needed. But if we're looking at, when we were trying to hire a new secretary, that budget for that position is well below a lot of what I would say the average in the county is for secretary clerical positions. And so, was somewhat of a challenge when looking for a new secretary. So, like I say, if not, bring up equal, at least very close.
And the, and you understand, part of the difference between the two is that longevity factor above the base pay is what pushes your highest pay, when even higher is due to their longevity.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So the alignment of their base pay, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir. I'm speaking just base pay. Yes, sir. So, the numbers, if I understand everything correct, is 31,951 on the longest tenure and 27,244 on the shortest. I would like to bring that 27,000 up as close to 31,000 as possible. Like I say, I understand that's a large jump, and I don't agree with granting it all at one time, but like I say, we'd like to be able to at least get as close as I can.
I do not remember the reason why.
Is this one of the lowest paid clerical we have?
It's always been that way.
That's the lowest.
Historical methodology.
Yeah, I don't remember why the disparage.
Like I say, obviously, I wasn't here and don't know, but like I say, as far as job responsibilities, they're, I would consider pretty equal. They're, if one's busy, the other one's picking up slack. As travel time like this summer, they both handle in the office equally. I mean, there's many, many times we've got two people on the phone over there. Like I say, luckily, that phone system's set up good, but we'll have, we'll have two people calling in at the same time during this busy time of year.
Did you have an opportunity to, over the last several months, we've been gathering job descriptions, did you have an opportunity to do that with Nikki and Lynn?
Uh, I don't remember the request, but I could easily have those, we have them on file.
Did you sit down with Nikki at any point in time?
We did come over one time to look at what we were looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, we, right. But like I say, we have job descriptions on file, and get those in about five minutes.
During that discussion, did they remain in a similar category to one another?
Yes.
They did. Okay.
One of the clerical one, one of the clerical two.
Right. I believe the delineation of one and two is just a way to identify. I don't, I can't remember or determine why the disparage.
That was what was told to me, but like I say, I can't say that was 100%. It wasn't from someone that was, when that was founded. I should say.
While we're studying on that, tell us about the programs that are running through there. You've had so many programs running through your office.
Yes, sir. So, just, you know, as a refresher, there's three agents at this time. We're without a 4-H agent. Unfortunately, that puts a lot of extra strain on Carolyn and I, but more so than anyone, I would say those two secretaries, those, that 4-H agent answered a bunch of questions, a bunch of phone calls, and had a lot of programs going. It's, it's been neat to me. Our 4-H agent left us in April, April the 2nd, I believe to be exact. And I'm talking to people now, we're getting ready to buy new livestock projects, and they tell me that they didn't realize that she had left. And to me, that speaks on those secretaries. They've kept the newsletters going, they've kept the email chain going, they've kept the county informed on what's going the county informed on what's going on. But as far as programs this summer that's going on right now, I just got back last night at 9:30, was assigned by the state, Go Down. We took 25 kids all across, I'd say, a two-hour radius of College Station, and taught them about the equine industry. We got to meet people in the industry that most people go a lifetime trying to talk to and were not able to. We got behind the scenes of the Houston, Sam Houston Race Track, largest polo club in the United States and so forth. So, I was gone there. I'm here today. In the morning, we've got validation. I'll get to Ken McGee's pens about 5:00 a.m., get through at 9:00, and head out to Fort Worth. And we've got a team of four young ladies that's going to represent Henderson County at the American Paint World Show and judge for the world championship. And they're representing Henderson County for that. And if do well, we'll be able to notify and tell people where Henderson County is on a national level up there. But then, we return there and got right back kids going to state horse show along with all the other states shooting sports games that'll be rounding up at the end of the month. We've got my professional development tour. And that's just kind of 4-H programs without a 4-H agent. As far as ag programs, as y'all well know, most ag producers are daylighting it to after dark right now. So, as far as our educational programs, they're on pause until fall, and we'll step back up in the fall with our Winter Pastor Seminar, and we have a Cal Cap Roundtable, and an event at the end of the month. And then, they met last night, getting the fall run, to who started with the wildlife program, so we can have that educational program, has been going for several years. And so, I say just a little bit of the programs going on, and y'all know how long I'm gone tending to some of that. So, in return, those two ladies in the office make it all possible. Because while I'm out, we still have the residents that needed to be tended to and have questions. And so, they're receiving phone calls. Fortunate for us, we have that 12-year, 10-year one that can answer a lot of questions. But those that can't get answered, I get an email. And so, like after this equine and bastard trip, when I get back to the hotel room at 11:30, and I respond to emails, trying to help people out as possible. So, it's what keeps our office going, especially this time of year.
Commissioner, not to put you on the spot, but you're our resident expert in these type of programs due to your past experience. It's definitely a demanding field.
Well, I mean, he just named off a few things that are going on this summer. That was just summer. So, I'd like to say thank you to you and to the others that are, to other extension agents that we have there right now. Y'all came into a situation that was, we had a good county agent program, good, and y'all, I think y'all have done nothing but make it better.
Appreciate that.
So, I appreciate that, because I've still got lots of people I know that have kids that travel with these horse judging teams and livestock teams. And I don't get anything back in price for the job you're doing and traveling with kids. So, how many kids do we have in the 4-H program?
There's, I believe, enrolled right now is just shot 300.
So, not only taking care of the things that the farmers and ranchers and homeowners have going on around the county with insects and crops and cattle and everything else, and y'all are having to train and teach 300 future agricultures. So, I think y'all are doing a tremendous job.
Appreciate it.
Is 4-H still doing the shooting sports?
Yes, they are. Right now, there's an active archery and shotgun sports. It's pretty neat. Just a few months ago, we got in contact with a gentleman that was big in the rifle shooting, the 22 caliber, when he was like 21 or something out in West Texas. And he's worked a career and retired, and they've moved here. He and his wife are both NRA instructors and everything, and we're actually sending them to coaches training, and they're going to get that shooting sports, the rifle part of it started back up this coming year, so.
The shotgun is still?
Yes, shotgun and archery are going strong. I personally made it out to the last practice of the shotgun sports just the other day, and I just estimate 25 kids out there that I was embarrassed to shoot in front of.
Now, we've produced some awesome shooters in our history of the county, and we've had some that are still shooting nationally, so it's great, it's a great.
It's sure neat to me to see, you know, I grew up judging and showing animals, but it's been neat to come to this county and see all the different avenues. And at the end of the day, we're just, we're building future leaders. We just use whatever avenue that they're interested in. But at the end of the day, they're learning parliamentary procedure, leadership skills, skills they're going to use for a lifetime. So, it's sure been neat to me, coming to this county and seeing what we have to offer. But yes, sir, starting in September, we'll have all three areas of shooting sports going strong.
Very good. One of the things you mentioned about the archery, and I know it's kind of big in Maybank D S B.
I mean, that just hit a home run.
So, do our kids, I guess 4-H kids, do they have the same opportunity to go to the national show in Kentucky?
So, I wish Danny was in here, she'd be able to speak more so on it. But she, her son competes both, I believe. But, so, we have a national competition. I don't believe it's the same. However, a lot of our kids dual purpose. Malakoff just got a grant, and they're about to try to map what Maybank's done. And so, we see, there's two different competitions. There's the 4-H competition, and then what they're doing in school, I think, is N A S P, and don't get me lying to you on what that stands for. So, I guess, long story short, it's two different competitions, but a lot of kids are involved in both.
Okay. Where are we at on our, you mentioned we don't have a 4-H later? Where are we at on that?
So, last time I spoke with the people at College Station, I was told September 1. But as I've been in contact with y'all since the day she left, you know, I wanted to have someone, she left April the 2nd, April the 18th. But like I say, with budgets and everything switching, I assume September 1 because the new budget will be in effect. We did get good news and got fully funded from the state on funding. So, that's a positive on our end, on the College Station side of it. So, September 1 is when I was told we'll be able to open it external. They opened it internally for a short time period and did not get the application pool that we would like and what I felt we needed here in Henderson County. So, they're going to open it hopefully externally. September 1 is the last date that was told to me. Which, as y'all well know, that's our kickoff time. You know, I hate it to be that late, to be honest, but we skipped, we were talking about our open house this morning, we're hoping to have it first part of September. And like I say, I wish for everything that we have a 4-H agent in effect already, but we'll work through it and work as a team and take care of the kiddos.
It was a tremendous loss with Kate's departure.
Absolutely.
Not everyone realizes, before you came, before you were appointed, Kate's the one that held your office together, as well as Ms. Paris. Without those two individuals, our extension office would have crashed and burned.
Absolutely.
So, the question that Commissioner McCam just asked, they opened it up internally, so Sheila is basically handling the replacement of Kate. And then, those resumes are sent to you for your review, or is the selection being done to the east?
No, sir. That decision, once that application pool is filled to what she feels is a safe number, she would then send them to myself, which then I will forward them towards the judge. And I don't know exactly y'all's laws, but only a couple of y'all can be on that committee. And so, I'll leave that in the hands of Judge McKinney, to which the commissioners will be involved. But as y'all well know, and it is my opinion, that y'all's opinion is just, is important, if not more important than people sitting in Overton. So, y'all will be involved, and I will make 100% sure of that. So, we don't get to see the front end of it, we just get to, like I say, we can look through all those applications, and I say "we" because I'd like to work closely with y'all, and then at that time, make decisions to move further with interviews or keep it open.
But you did get to see the internal opening, those resumes?
No, sir, I did not. It was not even enough for her to send. That's what she's like, it's not worth me sending stuff to y'all, we need to wait until we can open it externally, so.
Okay.
One application.
That's a little bit concerning, Judge, because Overton did not gallop to assist us in replacing our county agent. I'm sure they wouldn't want me on that committee.
I look at it again.
We need to stay close to that.
Yes, sir.
You and the judge.
There was one application internally, and so, that's why, that's why y'all did not hear about it. I assure you, you made your message clear with Ms. Harris, and I can assure you, you will be notified.
That is what I was going to say. It seems it may be a negative, but it may be a positive from lessons learned from the last round of replacements.
I would say that'd be a very safe comment to make.
Thank you.
Well, I'll be darned. It's a little bit of a shocker, but good to hear. So, I guess you have some type of a game plan if it takes 12 months to find Kate's replacement?
Yes, sir.
Because if we go back several years, our enrollment in the 4-H program has increased annually, since pushing 300. I know I was 270-something at the banquet last year of active enrollment. So, I mean, that's positive, but it's still climbing. We certainly, through the bureaucracy of the system, we wouldn't want that to have an impact on the program because it is so, so very important to the youth of this county.
Absolutely.
If there's anything that this court can do to support you in that regard, please reach out, and reach out quickly. Do not hesitate.
I will do, and I appreciate that.
You said the budget didn't start till, their budget didn't start till September 1. So, what happened to the money that was, that's going from April to September that would have been budgeted if that person was still here?
Same thing that happens with y'all's, with y'all's money. It just, y'all door back into the general fund, I assume. Might be a question for someone else, but.
Could be that are reallocated to meet what may be perceived a higher need at the time.
Do you know of any other counties that have been without a 4-H agent for a year or more?
Yes, sir. Way more than that. So, the ag agent, the position I filled was open for a year and a half here. There are no counties that have been two and a half, three years without an ag agent. And then, in 2012, lucky, I know he's got rifted a 4-H agent. But yes, sir, there's counties that's been without a 4-H agent longer. The minute I found out with Kate was going back to Nebraska, I was in one email contact and then personal contact and have stayed in contact. I'm going to say we've had six emails of continuing with updates because that's not something that is, that I want to happen here in this county. I might be biased, but I think we've got one of the best counties in the state and best programs in the state, and I want to continue that, continue growing.
Anything else? Rick Hirsch is a really good friend of mine.
Yes, sir.
Not only is a county extension agent, he's a good guy. And I know you were put in when I was not in court, and I think they've done a tremendous job picking you. Are you enjoying this county? I know you came out of Camp County.
Yes.
Did you? I know there's no comparison between Camp and Henderson.
Right.
Challenges for you?
Yes, sir. I've enjoyed every minute of it. Love it. Truly do.
Well, I've hearing good. Everybody I talked to says good things about you.
Right.
They did a good job picking you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. I would like to add one thing, the history. We had a longtime county agent that built a fantastic program, 4-H program and all the others. Listening at the numbers, for us not to suffer a collapse during that time, as Commissioner alluded to earlier, is a testimony to the people in your office. And also, the struggling through to get through this shorthanded now is a tribute to yourself in your office. And their efforts to keep that program that is expected. One of the things you said many times was, who wants to follow in behind a Rick Hirsch, a man that was wildly successful at it? You have, and you've done well. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Henderson County's been lucky all the years.
We've strayed away.
Having a longtime county agent.
Yes.
We hadn't had to struggle through the agents coming and going.
Yes, sir.
They've always came to Henderson County and found it to be a place they wanted to stay. And I hope you have that same feeling.
You bet. And I consider it an honor to be the third agent in 53 years, like I say. And we all know I wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't something very, very unfortunate. I think that speaks to y'all's support of the extension office, because I can honestly say it's not that way across the state. So, it's a good feeling to know where I'm at in my life and career, and sure proud to be here.
I think it speaks toward the people of Henderson County, too, whenever we can get agents to come and stay that long.
Yes, sir. 100%.
Mr. Perkins, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We're still gaining time, and that's good, because we have our elections administrator with her next, with us next.
Have extra time.
Yes, ma'am. Give us, okay, yes, sir. Give us 10 minutes, I got a cup.
I met her earlier this morning.
I know, yeah. Been working to 7:00 this morning.
Okay, so 11:25, we'll come back into session. And we have with us, as I said earlier, our election administrator, Ms. Denise Hernandez.
Yes, sir.
And Denise, if you wish to proceed?
Sure, but I feel a little underprepared. I didn't bring any handouts. I don't have anything to say.
You have so much experience and knowledge that...
Yeah, okay. That's a good one. Okay, next year is presidential election, of course, you know. We're gonna have a minimum of four elections next year. First one starts off in February for your early voting for primary election. Then I'm gonna jump into May's for city and schools. And then we'll have a runoff at the end of May. And then we'll have a little break in between, and then we'll start off for our general presidential election. It's gonna be a busy year for us. I currently have in the office one temp getting me through Jeanette's, and we're not even getting me through it, just partially. Getting me through, one of my clerks is on maternity leave and won't return until first week in September. I have another one that's out with her visas expired, but I'm hoping she'll come back by the end of this week. So that's what I have going on right now. I'm working on vote centers. Met with Commissioner McCam this morning. I think we found a perfect site for one of the vote centers in Brownsville. So that's going well. I'm not really, I mean, I'm basing this with just a small percentage that's going up for the 2020 elections. The only thing I'm really thinking about, and I want you to consider, is I do have an equipment, piece of equipment I'd like to purchase. It's a scanner, just like the precinct scanner, and it has an election day. And this one is a larger machine. It will stay there centrally to do, of course, the ballots by mail. But after I got to thinking, this machine will actually pull out anything, and I hate to even say this out loud, in case we have any recounts, it will automatically scan those ballots for you and pull them out for us.
It will sort them?
It will sort them out per race, per precinct, anyway. That machine itself is about $50,000.
How much?
$50,000. I think it'd be beneficial. Last recount we had, we were there until midnight. Because once we started, we can't stop. We have to continue going. Which at this time, if we didn't purchase something like that for next year, we're gonna have to manually go through each one of the ballots and actually pull that. So, you know, I would like to probably get that larger scanner for the central.
On that subject of the machine...
Yes, sir.
Going to the new system, the SNS system, we've reintroduced a paper tray, which is what this machine will use in the recount, not using the electronic data. It's actually a recount of the paper documents.
Yes, sir. You could do other way, don't get me wrong, but yes.
But, and also, as we transition to the vote centers, is where the complication comes in, is because whereas before with our voting precincts, every ballot was in that precinct, now the ballots scattered across the entire county.
Exactly.
Creating this efficient need for sorting to do a recount.
That's correct, that's correct. Because it's gonna, each vote center will be conducted like early voting, so every ballot stall will be at each one of those vote centers. Which means we would have to go through each one of those boxes to sort manually. This machine would still have to do it, but in a matter of minutes, we would have that portion of it done.
And to even carry the complication of it, whereas before, I said this that way before, in a manual recount prior to the inception of this...
All we would go through is absentee ballots and...
Right. If we have to manually recount a precinct race, whereas before it would be combined, it would be manually every box.
Right, definitely.
Instead of just the manual per precinct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
What would that piece of equipment do during off time?
It would do our absentee ballots. We currently, probably last year, just in the gubernatorial, we sent out 3,000 ballots. Keep in mind, we have to do a manual hand count all the time after every election. It's state mandated, so we're always doing them. It's usually on our three largest boxes. And so we're used to pulling them like that. Now, when you look at the actual ballot stalls we have now, now the ones at the post are gonna be a smaller version, you know, on that thermal stock. And so the printing on it is a lot smaller, so it's gonna make it a little difficult when you're trying to pull those manual. It can be done, don't get me wrong.
Well, I'm saying the scanner deal...
The central, it will be doing primarily the absentee ballots, but it will come in handy when we have to do manual counts.
Well, I'm saying after March, between March and May, or January to March, and then May to November, will that scanner still be being used, or...
It'll be set up there in the office, so, I mean, just like any other piece of equipment.
And it wouldn't be any kind of a copier, or a digital scanner?
No. Any election equipment, anything like that can't be used for anything else.
This is an added piece of equipment to our election system.
It is a scanner, just like the precinct scanners on election day, it's just a larger version.
I understand, I'm just trying to clarify.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, no.
Did we discuss it when we were buying the...
No, we didn't, because it was an afterthought, and I came to the judge with it afterwards.
Okay.
You know, being you and everything, once you're going through, and we've been through our first election, then I realized, well, you know what? If we do this...
I got you.
And how much did you say it was?
It's $50,000.
Okay, that's the equipment thing that's in the budget already?
Yes, yes it is, and I just wanted to explain it to you, because I hadn't discussed it with you guys.
How was the response, when we do the May election? So how was the response to your voter turnout of, did they like the new system?
Yeah, I mean, of course, you know, your May elections are a lot smaller, but no, they loved the new equipment. You know, for years, they've been touching the screens of the E slates, and, you know, you can always hear them in there, and you're like, it's not a touchscreen, remember? So, you know, I think maybe you had two people came here to our location who were asking for their little Fisher-Price toy. Turning them around.
Did that be somebody from the precinct? Wasn't you asking for that couple?
I liked them real good. I'm not... I really enjoyed it. It was always a challenge for me.
On a side note, I mean, that kind of adds to the same discussion. Two nights ago, I saw on the news, Dallas County spent $31 million buying ESNS election equipment this past year. $31 million.
Yeah. Yes.
I know this is all subject, but did everything work out good?
It did, it did. Of course, you know, we had Danda Parker here with ESNS, which is, she resides in our neighboring county, Navarro. So she was on hand with us to go tech support. We only had one location, I think it was the Paint Springs location, that had an issue. And they tried to tug it out, making it jam, and so we had to go out there and just, you know, just open it up, reset it, and then it was fine. But, you know, because they were tugging at it before it was ready for it to be, you know, so they, I don't know, sometimes it seems to amaze me how it gets messed up, because I just have to deal with it.
The ballot as it was run through?
As it was running through, they didn't release it. They held it, it kinda jammed that roller, and so it wouldn't go back in. So they have emergency slots on it. We have the voter just cast it until we can get there. Once we get there and we get the machine back up and ready, then they'll, the judges there at those locations, both judges, will open it up and re-scan those ballots for them. So they were all in there and all accounted for.
The benefits that we thought we were gonna get with the new system from ESNS have came to fruition?
Yeah. Your voters really, really liked it. I don't know if you heard from any of your voters during that time period. They really liked being able to print that card back out, being able to review their choices, and then going and casting their ballot on the scanner.
I didn't hear anything about it, and that's good?
I didn't, no. In fact, they loved it, because they could touch the screen, so it was like their tablets and their phones. The one good thing, you know, is that even if they doubted what was printed on their card, they could always re-enter it back into the express vote, and then re-verify that that's the same thing that came of the choices that they made. So you're gonna have doubters, no matter, you know, what election, what type of equipment you're gonna have. You know, the only thing we can tell them at this point is, well, you know, this is what printed, this is what you've chosen, is this not what you chose? Well, yeah, it is, but how do I know that once it goes through that scanner over there, it's going to have these votes on it? And so, well, you can put it back in the express votes, and you can read your choices. At that time, when you re-scan it in the express votes, you can't make any changes to it, because it's already documented, right? So you could just review it. That's the same thing that's gonna do when you scan it in your DS 200, so...
I think that might be a big deal.
It is.
That year, whenever, when I was able to vote straight ticket.
You're right about that.
People wanted to review that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, and that's something you'll have to explain to them. I'm hoping, I just set up the demo in the back room the other day, I'm hoping to have, you know, the media come out, so that they could review the equipment and do the little demo election that I have on there, so they can see the ease of it. I think the more that we get it out this summer, the more familiar that the voters will be with it. Come what, next year? Because it is gonna be a crazy election next year, we're gonna be busy. I'm expecting at least 5,000, 5,500 ballots by mail, you know, and that's a lot of... Also, the printing of our ballots went over really well. You know, once we had our file in there, usually we wait for our ballots. This time, we printed just what we needed, because we have it there in-house now, so we print our own ballots to send out to our voters. So that went over really well. Of course, it was a learning experience for us, you know, first time doing it, so it was better that it was a small election, that we had the time to, you know, learn it as we went.
So right now, in your office, you have one temp?
I have a temp, and I have a lady who's been there a week and a half, Kelly Warren. She's, she was a current employee, she was a previous employee for the county, and she's picking up really well.
In preparation for the 2019 budget, our current budget, we eliminated a position, didn't we?
We did, we did, because I asked for that position when we had a ruling through legislature to actually, if you had five tenants who resided in a retirement facility, then you would have to open up an early voting site there. And for that purpose, I didn't want to send somebody who wasn't aware of the laws. I wanted somebody who knew what they were gonna do, and what they were gonna be able to do on those applications. They had to know how to fill out every application by ballot by mail. They had to know the laws pertaining to it. And so for that reason, you let me hire an additional person, or gave me that position. I didn't have to, because then the law was recalled right after that first election. And so for that reason, I gave that back.
Okay.
I am, just like everyone else, concerned with salary, because of how many employees I keep losing. So it's a lot of work. I've asked for my girls to be re-titled, because of the fact that we're not just any deputy clerks. I mean, we're there 60, 65 hours a week. Nikki can verify the amount of overtime my office gives. And it's a lot, it's a lot of time away from your family. And so it's hard to keep somebody in there, especially when the pay is so low. I just want you to consider taking some kind of action to make it just a little more desirable for somebody to want to do that. It's hard work, guys. We're there on bad weather days, when everybody else is home, especially if it's an election. We're there on some holidays, you know, so not everybody wants to do that. We're there on weekends, we're there late at night in preparing. And next year is not gonna be any easier, it's gonna be just as many hours, if not more.
We do know that the hours that are required hasn't been a factor in you losing staff?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. If you take into consideration what Jenny made above her salary last year, she didn't want to leave the county, she just went right next door for 1,600 base more. Well, she made that more the previous year. The fact of the matter is, is Jenny had four kids, and you lose a lot of time with your family like that. And that's time I can't give them back, so...
When we created this position, prior to, what year was that?
I got it in the end of 2007, started 2008.
2009. Prior to that, the elections have been run by the county clerk's office and the tax assessor collector, joint responsibilities, using their staff. And this office was created with that as the base. Since that time, we have seen so many changes...
Oh, yeah.
...in the election process, the complexity of it, and the growth in responsibilities, regulations, and even authority in unfunded mandates, maybe, into this. This is no longer, in my opinion, a traditional election from that mindset of '07 forward. It is much more complex operation than it was originally.
Oh, yeah, definitely. When I first took office, I had two employees, and if you look back at that time, when it was Gwen, she was Gwen, and maybe her 12 to 15 employees who worked. You had Milburn, who had two full-time and a part-time. And I took office, and I got two full-time. You know, yes, I've changed a lot of things. We don't have to print out these huge books, which makes that process go a little faster by adding those poll books. You know, we've made a lot of progress in the 11 years, and I think it's all good.
But we still miss the chalkboard. We still miss the chalkboard.
Well, you know what I miss? I'm gonna tell you what I miss. I miss going to the courthouse on election night, and it being jam-packed with everybody. Now I go over there, and I just hang it up on the wall, and there's nobody there.
I know. Maybe we could get a big screen at the Texan, and have it up there live streaming, you know, and it'll get the crowds back.
Definitely, definitely. Though, no, but, I mean, there's a lot of laws, you know, and just like you know, legislature makes a lot of changes, and it's not always good for us, because there are other things that we have to add into that. So, you know, we have those challenges, just like every other office, I'm sure. But, you know, I know that we work long hours, and so I want, I want you to know, they work hard, so...
You made reference earlier to at least one, one full-time employee, base hour's 31, and in the course of the year, $10,000 worth of overtime. That's an understanding of how many hours they're putting in, in these slots. So, other than increasing the number of employees, without that, the overtime's gonna be what the overtime ends?
Definitely, yes, because, yeah, we work as a team. No one leaves before the other. Just because you're done with your job, well, they're all, they all know. If once we're done with the elections in the back, early voting, those people are gone, then, you know, we're gonna go up front and finish that work. Because it's just gonna accumulate the next day, it's not gonna be any easier for them to get that, do that stack tomorrow. We have to get it done that day. We have restrictions, we have stacks that come from the mail, from the state, even during early voting, of people who are qualified to vote in the current election. We may be in early voting, still inputting stacks of voter registration processes, but... And that's hard when you have voters calling. We're in the back, working with the staff in the back, making sure they're doing everything right. Or we're at one of the substations during early voting. So, they do, they have to, they have to deal with the law.
One issue that you haven't touched upon is with the procurement of the new equipment, and if we successfully transition to the vote centers, we have an added complication of delivery of equipment on election day. Could you go into that?
Yeah. With the May, it wasn't bad. I loaded, you know, at least three tubs in at a time. We only had seven actual elections going on, so two trips, right, to get all the tubs there. We didn't think about it. We have two little trailers that Rick and Mike help us deliver, as we're following behind them, setting up those polling places. When you think of just the tubs, I think it's filling like half of the bay over there at the shop. That's gonna take up most of the space, and that's not even talking about the election equipment that's inside. So we are gonna have an issue with that. I did try to call around and see if there was any local furniture stores that might be interested in letting us, you know, delivering the equipment for us, or at least the tub portion of it, you know, but I had no takers, so, you know, that's something that we're gonna have a problem with.
What are you moving that equipment with right now?
We have the sheriff's trailers that we borrowed.
Enclosed trailer?
So it's gotta be enclosed trailer?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I think the last time we had some in the back of someone's truck, they ended up on 31. I remember Judge Holstein called me, he says, "See, your trash cans all on 31." And I was like, "What?" I was like, "No." But, yeah, it's just better if we put them inside. I've had flags fly out of the back of the vehicles, open vehicles, and stuff like that, so...
And the reason that this has come back again is because of the reintroduction of the paper ballot.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, the tubs.
Because previously, as you've said, under Judge Holstein at that time, we still had paper ballots and was scanning into the ballot recycler.
Yeah, because my youngest commissioner at that time, he was adamant, he was still gonna vote paper ballots.
Pardon?
My youngest commissioner at the time?
Mm-hmm, yes.
He did, he was like, "Oh, I'm paper." No, but, I mean, that's true, it's a, you know, we didn't, we didn't take that into consideration when we were making that choice. And the tubs take up a lot of space. I mean, I can't even keep them in my office, because there's so many of them, that I keep them in the bay, the last bay of the shop. And so delivery-wise, it's gonna take, it's either gonna add a couple more days into delivery, which that's taking Rick and Mike off from county business to do, to deliver the tubs prior, so...
The tubs is the issue. Actually, getting the election equipment is not...
No. I think it's the tubs.
It's the tubs.
Yeah, it takes up most of the space. You know, with the Tahoe, I can put all the poll books in there, and, you know, we deliver them just like that. Also, when I pick up my early voting equipment, because they're my election day sites as well, I'll go ahead and leave election day equipment. The city has a locked room that they give me access to, a key, so I can go in there and lock the equipment until we can go and set it up on that Monday morning.
Okay. Joan?
Once you get it, we'll be able to explain the situation.
Other than that, my numbers that are reflected, basically, they go from 2018, right? So, because that's my other general election year. So I usually just add very small percentage, because of course, you know, all vendors are gonna go up a certain percentage, and that's just to... And of course, I noticed that currently, under my travel, I believe, it's like in the negative 307. Link and verify, I get Chapter 19 reimbursement for all my travels, so, you know, that's never been an issue. It's just about 100%, if we don't get a little bit more of a reimbursement back from the state.
Are you comfortable with the software maintenance line, given the world that needs...
I think so, because I pulled all the invoices, I even asked them to send me what it was gonna be, and those are the numbers they gave me, so yes, I believe that's a good number.
What about your elections expense, given that we have this, the 2020 barreling in on us?
Well, what really shoots our expense up, and mind you, this will be our first time with ESNS, so I don't know what that bill is gonna run yet, but most of the time, what went up a lot of the times was our election worker expense, and so now that's paid differently, and so, through payroll. And so I'm okay with it, as long as you know that we have not received bills yet from an ESNS general election year, so I have no idea what the cost is gonna be. I did make sure that all the cost from the May elections was billed directly to the entities, and that's the way I plan on keeping it.
If we do decide to go to election centers, and, you know, you're gonna have that small percentage of people going to their old voting places, how are you looking to...
Well, we talked about it in the committee, that we were gonna send out and create a flyer to send out to head of household. That's the way we plan on getting most of those out, but just like everything else, we'll probably have about 5,000 of those come back, either suspended, because it's a bad address. We will be, you know, putting that on media, and we're required by law to post on the doors of the previous locations, and we do that. And it's not to come down until the day after the election. So we've always posted, we've been posting since I took office. In fact, in the past, we used to even report to the Department of Justice, but we no longer have to.
All I'm just saying is, the people go to their old voting box, and they have to go somewhere else now, there'll be something posted there to state...
Definitely, yes. It will give them the locations of all the vote centers nearest there, with the addresses on there. Because that's a, that's a law that changed, but we always did that. A law, it requires you now put the location plus the address on there. A law, it requires you now put the location plus the address on there. Uh, but we have always done that in motion.
I, I think this would fit in, into the budget process if it does correct. But, uh, what do we add on, on our voter center committees?
Uh, we're hoping to have our first, uh, committee meeting the first week of July. You've got to keep in mind, we kind of have to rush that through because of the fact that, uh, it has to be submitted in August for us to be qualified for November election. And that's our goal, is, uh, first week. And the reason we're doing that is we have a couple of committee members on, Commissioner Thomas's area that's on vacation until that first week of July. So that's why I'm hoping either the first, second, or third, we'll have our first meeting to speak with them. And, uh, we're going to be speaking with Crossroads ISD, hopefully, real soon, so we can see if we can use that location as a vote center.
The curbsides, did we use those in the May? How'd that work out?
Uh, it was good. I think we, we had 10. Of course, you know, that's a May election. Um, but it went over well. Uh, you know, it's, it's a smaller piece of equipment. But like I said, even if something happens and they do away with that, all of our equipment now is DRE. It, it's designed to go curbside. So it doesn't matter what, what line in the daisy chain there are, where they stand, any one of them can just be, because they're all standalone, right? And so any one of them can go off there.
Commissioner Giesel?
Do you know of House Bill 1205 passed?
Remind me which one this is?
Relating to the creation of a fund to assist local governments with the acquisition of voting system equipment.
I believe it made it to the governor's desk. I don't know that he's yet signed it, but yes. Uh, as far as we know, there's a possibility.
That was my understanding, and it basically, it says it will go into effect on September the 1st.
Yes. Uh, and, and that's what we're hoping for because then that'll make that 50,000 scanner go away because then we'll, we will be able to purchase that.
Have you made any inquiries? Because I have not.
I have not.
I just followed the bill and knowing that it, it, the way the verbiage was, we should qualify.
Oh, yeah, most definitely, we would.
So we should be able to request state supplement for what we've already done. So we should get more than even any $50,000.
Yes, definitely. And, uh, I haven't acquired on it because, you know, I do have the election law seminar to go to at the end of July, and they will, uh, discuss that there at the conference.
Well, I, I thought this was the right time to bring it up since we're talking about election equipment. Now, um, there's been a, a lot of discussion about you and your office, Manning, um, I thought you made an outstanding point. When elections were easy, if, if, if that was ever the case, but let, let's say when we had the chalkboard in the hallway of, of the courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it kind of takes you back to World War II, in essence, where you had individuals moving the battleships around on, on the map. Uh, that was kind of what we had Gwen Moffett, the county clerk at the time, or one of her deputies, or someone from the tax office would scurry out from, uh, the back room and update all the votes on the chalkboard. Um, and Haley, since you may not be aware of this, this happened as late as 2006. So I am not taking you back to the 40s. Uh, so we have, and I know you wouldn't understand what happened in the 40s, so, only old guys like me. Um, the point that you made, and I, I wanted to make it again, at that point in time, we probably had five or six people working out of the county clerk's office to control and run that election. And we also had at least three or four, and you, you basically came out of the tax office.
I was property tax bookkeeper.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. Um, so, my goodness, back when elections were simple, and why do I use the term "simple"? Prior to the hanging chad in Florida, um, elections were simple. That's when everything went to hell in a handbasket as far as elections in this country were concerned. Because elections were then on TV as being stolen. And, and, and there came Fisher Price for Henderson County with the hard equipment under the HABA Help America Vote Act. And basically, almost at the same time, we created your office. And maybe it was logical, um, because, but maybe not, that we made a person, the vote, election administrator, and two people.
Mm-hmm.
But the thing was, we had all those people working elections out of those two offices, and let us not forget, there was another person that was sitting over in the old tax office on the third floor that was referred to as the election registrar. So in essence, we created one position, because there was two over there. So the, the county created a new department, pulling a person out of the tax office and moving the two people that were already county employees over in that office. So net-net, there were no more people involved, but really, on election day, there were about 10 people less working on elections than we have today.
Yes.
I, I, that has never been said, and I'm so disappointed in you not to have done this, this analysis, because therein lies the problem. And, and, and you are in constant contact with your peers, um, election administrators from other counties that have exactly the same job, no differently than a presentation that Judge McKenney and I attended, uh, put on by the election administrator out of Lubbock, for vote centers. Workers in those departments in other counties, what do they make?
It depends. It, you know, I know counties that are smaller that probably make more, but then there's some that are about my size and make a little less. It just really depends. I mean, depends on that area.
Okay, but you know, you have to answer the question like this.
Okay, tell me.
I will. If they have six people working in that office, they might make a little less than yours. But if they had the numbers that we have, are those the ones that are making a lot more?
Some of them.
Well, we need to know this. We, we really need to know this so that we can get our arms around your turnover. Because no matter what anyone thinks, from a commissioner's standpoint, the stress that your people work under because of constant phone calls, that this is wrong, that is wrong, and why is this happening, and why was I denied being able to vote? Why were the, uh, they told me to go vote over here, and when I got over here, I was told to go back and vote over there. And, and then that comes back to the other issue that I'm on record of stating in this court, of why we want to move to vote centers is because we have a aging population that runs our elections from a volunteer standpoint. And we train those folks, and, um, they don't do it every day. Our equipment is more complex, um, so we need to reduce the amount of poll workers that we require. Therefore, it would make sense to me that we have to add additional staffing to your department. Uh, when you're running with a couple or three people in your department, you lose one person, you lose two people, uh, then you're in a situation of kind of like an air traffic controller when all the screens go blank. All you have left is prayer. And especially when you're on the eve of, uh, eve meeting, the next three weeks, you're going to have a presidential or gubernatorial election. Um, I, I, I think that, that, if there was additional people in that department, it would reduce, reduce the amount of stress that all the people that work there, um, have.
Quite possibly.
And, you know, they could, you know, it's pretty easy to wait till the 11th hour and then say, "Well, I've had enough of this," and walk out the door. "Okay, I'm overtime again."
No, please continue. We, we went quite a good ways over. Keep continuing because it's, it is a good, it's absolutely the point that we're getting at with that, uh, with your department. We're doing it with less people and with more demand.
Oh, definitely.
And I agree completely with what the commissioner's saying.
Yeah.
So, one more time, Commissioner, if you'd like.
Oh, I could go on for another 10 minutes, but I know we're into your lunch hour, so I'm done.
All right. Denise, thank you very much.
No problem.
We appreciate it. And, um, coming back, we have one more at, uh, after lunch, the animal shelter will be here, so. With that, we'll, uh, recess until after lunch.
Will you...